Commission meeting of October tenth. And I would like to ask you to please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Roll call. Chair Nemeth, here. Vice Chair Avery.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Commissioner Anderson.
Here.
Commissioner French is absent. Okay, that's good. We have a quorum. May I get a motion? Excuse Commissioner French?
So moved.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Alright, Commissioner French is excused from this meeting. Item number four is the review of the agenda. Mr. Rob Bruce.
Ah, Madam Chair, we have more than the normal number of supplemental staff reports for your review tonight. Please go ahead and take a look at those. Also, unfortunately, the item for the cell tower did not post the site. So, we're recommending that that item be continued with approval of the agenda, so that we can reschedule that for the next hearing.
Okay, thank you very much. Alright, if we can have a few moments to review all of the supplemental information that was received. Thank you for your patience. They really did throw an awful lot of paperwork at us when we got up here, so. And we are fast readers, so we're just inundated. Okay, with that then. Puts us at item five. May I get a motion to waive the full reading of all resolutions on the agenda for this meeting?
Second.
I have a motion is second. All in favor? Aye? Any opposed? Alright, the motion passes. Item six on our agenda is for public comments on our consent calendar items and on any items that are not on our agenda. So if anybody is here to speak on our consent calendar, which is approving our minutes from our last month's meeting, or on any item not on the agenda, please come forward and you will have three minutes to speak.
The Park Community Council, and I'd like to mention that several days ago, we met with about five, six members of city staff. And during that time, I posed the question, what could be done to avoid the continued scenario when especially off-sale alcohol licenses come before you for a CUP in zip code nine-three-five-five-oh. We've been cautioning the city for many years now, asking them not to do that because of the terrible effect and impact that that's having, especially on the children of zip code nine-three, who reside in zip code nine-three-five-five-oh. As a result, it was Mr. Noel Doran who told us that what we needed was a remedy of a policy nature. They needed to be policy changes in order for that to happen. So we went ahead and made recommendations of five different policies that are changes, rather, that we think will help to alleviate this problem, make sure it doesn't happen in the future. And essentially, the first one is treat incidental use the same as primary use in every way, taking away the following policy changes. I'm sorry. In every way, taking away their exemption status from distance requirements. Increase the distance between off-sale alcohol establishments and all sensitive sites to a minimum of 1,000 feet. Include all alcohol establishments, off-sale and on-sale, in the list of sensitive sites for off-sale establishments only. Excuse me. Do away with retail density method of determining allowable number of olids in a given area slash census tract reporting district. And five, do away with the use of nine CRDs for determining allowable crime threshold and use only the thirty-three CRDs for determining this threshold. Now, I wish I had more time, but essentially, what we're here to do today with this item is we're hoping that you will place this item on the agenda for next meeting, so we can discuss it thoroughly. And we can then have a complete discussion about all of the recommendations we're making and try to move this issue forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Flores. Is there anybody else here to speak on items not on our agenda or on our consent calendar?
Not on the agenda, not on the consent calendar. Good evening, commissioners, staff, Madam Chair. I'm here to speak on behalf of our Veterans Military Ball, which is coming up on November 2nd, the first Saturday in November. Veterans Military Ball is a way of giving back to our veterans of senior age who served in World War II, Korea, and Vietnam, the feeling of respect that they sometimes lose over the years. It is an elegant evening, and it is a ball, it's kind of like Cinderella's type ball. We will be in gowns, suits, tuxedos, and formal military attire. So we hope that the information that you have before you, you'd be interested in participating in our Veterans Military Ball. Once again, it's a Veterans Military Ball. It encompasses all members and all branches of military, both male and female. And I believe we are the only Veterans Military Ball in the, well, at least in California. There might be one in Florida. And with my last two minutes, I'd like to bring to your attention that the Antelope Valley is in dire need of a rapid transit system. The future is upon us, and I would like to add to that future by saying a rapid transit system between the cities Palmdale, Lancaster, and Cort Hills is an item that we need desperately to keep our future from being overrun by carbon. We can become a total electric or green valley and save this air pollution for someone else. We can have clean air. And it's something that I believe we all can look forward to. Why rapid transit system? Because it's not subject to traffic lights, traffic collisions. It can go from one end of the valley to the other with under an hour, probably within thirty-five minutes. So I hope that in the future, if this proposal comes before you, that you'd be in consideration of approving a rapid transit system within the Antelope Valley. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Blanco. Is there anybody else here to speak? Okay, that will move us to item seven, our consent calendar. May I get a motion to approve the minutes from the last planning commission meeting?
So moved.
May I give a second?
Second.
I have a motion and I have a second. All in favor? Aye? Any opposed? Alright. I'm still voting aye, and it still passes.
Close.
Alright, the minutes are approved. Okay, that brings us to our public hearings. Is there anybody interested in making a motion to continue item eight A, since it was not publicly posted in time? I will make a motion to continue item eight A until next month.
Second.
And hope that they get it posted. Is it posted yet? Do you know? Okay. Tell them to post it, okay? Yes, I would like to make a motion to postpone this item until our November meeting.
Second again.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Nemeth and a second by Commissioner. Avery to postpone.
Just take a moment to work on the technical details.
See, technology is a blessing and a curse. Okay, we have a motion to continue the item and we have a second. So we'll now call for the question. Using our touchscreens. And the motion passes with four yes votes and Commissioner French absent. Okay. I'll let Kathy take a breathe right now. Okay, that was stressful. Okay, that moves us on to item eight B.
This will be presented by Justin Sauter.
Good evening, Planning Commission. The applicant is requesting to construct an assisted living memory care facility located on Rancho Vista Boulevard at the southerly terminus of Town Center Drive. The project site is just one parcel, however, the facility will be constructed on the easterly portion of the property shown here by the shaded area on the map. The assisted living facility is an approximately sixty-eight thousand square foot, two-story building that will have seventy rooms for assisted living and twenty-five rooms for memory care, for a total of one hundred and fifteen beds. The facility will provide a variety of amenities, including resident dining, courtyards, fitness center, salon, virtual reality room, library, game room, arts and crafts, theater, lounges. On-site improvements will include grading, parking, and landscaping that is all needed to support the development. The project meets or exceeds all PMC requirements. Here on the landscaping plan, you can see the two proposed courtyards. The larger courtyard contains a putting green, shaded seating, and a water feature. The smaller courtyard also has shaded seating and a water feature. There's also a small barbecue patio proposed on the southwest corner of the building with some outdoor seating. The two-story building exhibits four-sided architecture with projections and recesses, varying roof levels and types, wood trim around the windows, and varying colors, materials that are naturally occurring in the desert. All roof-mounted equipment will be screened beyond the tile roof and the parapet. The east elevation has been designed to help minimize any impacts to the single-family residences to the east. This elevation is only one story to help maintain the privacy and the character of the neighborhood. The north elevation provides visual interest from Rancho Vista Boulevard and Town Center Drive with resident balconies, varying roof lines and types, wood accents, and the port de coucher at the entrance of the building. The topography of the site should help minimize any potential visual impacts to future development on the vacant property to the south, because the foundation of the facility will be on average about eighteen feet lower than the vacant lot to the south. The applicant had some concerns and questions about the staff report and the conditions of approval. Engineering, traffic, and planning has responded to these concerns, as you can see on the memo before you. And we also did have one resident send an email with some concerns, which is also before you. The planning commission has three options tonight. Option one is to approve the project. Option two is to continue the project. Option three is to deny the project, and option one is recommended. That concludes my presentation, and I am available to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much, Mr. Sauter. Do any of the commissioners have technical questions for staff at this time? Okay.
Actually, I do. Just with respect to the memo. So, in the memo, the document we received today, I see that there are questions that are being asked of us, like item number four, page thirty-three, do we need to mention this in the conditions of approval? Is that for us to consider, or is that something that you're recommending?
Sorry, that was the question from the applicant, and then below is the response from city staff.
So you're responding to these questions from the applicant?
Correct.
When did the applicant receive your responses?
This afternoon.
Okay.
This all happened today.
Okay.
I'm not sure what you mean by technical questions. You mean questions about the project?
Yes, about the project that staff can answer, not that the applicant. This is questions for staff about their presentation and their report.
I was just gonna ask about the elevation, because this is stepped up. So they're gonna carve it into the same level as Rancho Vista Boulevard and then have a slope that goes up after the project?
Yes, there will be a retaining wall.
No, that's not, I don't think you answered the question. The site is already twenty feet lower than the property to the south. So they're gonna be doing some finish grading, but no, they're not lowering the site to the same level as Rancho Vista.
And the other question is, why doesn't the the entrance line up with Town Center Drive?
The driveway does.
Oh, the driveway, because it looks like it was offset a bit.
The covered entrance is offset from the, from Town Center Drive, but it
But you still come in lined up with Town Center Drive?
Right.
Okay.
It'll behave like a four-way intersection.
Oh, I got you, okay.
Any other questions for staff at this time? Okay, then at this time, I would like to open the public hearing on this item. If anybody is here to speak on this item, please come forward. If you can, please fill out a speaker slip, simply so we get your name right for the record. And you will have three minutes to speak. There will be a timer there, and so please pay attention to that. Is the applicant here? Alright, do any of our commissioners have questions for the applicant? Okay. And seeing nobody here to speak on this item, may I get a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close the public hearing? Second.
Alright, I have a motion and I have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, and opposed? Alright, the public hearing on this item is now closed. Commissioner, discussion? And/or emotion?
I just want to say that I, when I, I'm very familiar with that area, and I come up to that intersection quite often, and I was kind of expecting some information about the traffic issues there, but I just don't see any issues whatsoever, so. Perhaps that's why nobody's here to speak on that, but I also live near there and may end up spending some time there later on in my life, so. And I'm a golfer. So I appreciate the putting green, that's really a cool idea.
And at that point, all you'll be able to handle is the putting green part, so.
I think this is a great design. I really liked what you put together, and I'm looking forward to seeing it in its full development, so. Appreciate it.
It's only taken thirty years to get an actual assisted living project in Rancho Vista. I mean, everybody's been kicking and screaming for thirty years about having a real assisted living facility. So, it's very welcome. As long as you don't switch it, do a little switcheroo on us and turn it into low-income housing later.
Which cannot be done, because we are keeping an eye on you.
Okay.
And we have strict conditions.
We had, we had other locations, and we had big signs there for years that said, "Future" assisted living or whatever, "Future Senior Housing," and then they did a switcheroo on us. And said, "Well, we took the sign down," and now it's it's an apartment complex, but anyways. If you do that, that you're gonna have some protesters out here.
May I get a motion on this item, please?
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution PC two-zero-one-nine-dash-zero-four-two, approving site plan review nineteen-dash-zero-one-zero, unconditional use permit nineteen-dash-zero-zero-nine, and find out the project is categorically exempt from environmental review.
I'd like to send the motion.
I didn't hit my button here.
It understood your voice.
Yeah, it did. Very powerful.
It's like Alexa. Now I'm afraid. Okay. I have a motion from Commissioner Avery and a second from Commissioner Smith. Alright, any discussion on the motion? Alright, then we shall call for the question using our touchscreen. Let the record show that the motion passes with four yes votes and Commissioner French absent. And that will bring us to item eight C.
This will be presented by Matthew Alcaron.
Good evening. The applicant has submitted a request to establish a type-twenty beer and wine alcoholic beverage control license and tobacco sales for a grocery store use within an existing forty-five-hundred square foot tenant space located at three-zero-two-zero Palmdale Boulevard, shown here in the red box. This slide shows the existing shopping center previously approved through a site plan review in nineteen-eighty-four. The grocery store building is situated adjacent to the Don Chato Mexican Restaurant to the west. Pursuant to the municipal code, a CUP is required for this sale of beer, wine, and tobacco. The proposed square footage for the display and sale of alcohol and for tobacco are shown above, as well as the hours of operation, which is similar to the other grocery store uses within the vicinity. The proposed project does not include any expansions to the building or parking area. Only minor interior improvements are proposed, such as new electrical and painting. Per the PMC, the planning commission must consider over-intensification, high crime, the surrounding area, and hours of operation with regards to approval of this CUP. The project is located within Census tract ninety-one oh-six oh-two, which has a population of four thousand thirty-eight people. The two methods to determine over-intensification are population density and retail density. The project site does have an over-intensification as shown above, because there are five existing off-sales licenses and only two are allowed. It should be noted that the population of Census tract ninety-one oh-six oh-two is lower than other tracts within Palmdale, because a significant portion of land within the tract is designated as community commercial and public facilities. The project site does not experience over-intensification based on the retail density method, because nine off-sale establishments are allowed and only three exist. Here is the retail density method map showing the twenty randomly selected off-sale sites. The project site is located within the crime reporting district twenty-six oh-eight. Within the last year, there were only three calls for service reported for this address by the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department. The sheriff's department recommends approval of this CUP. If the proposed business generates an increase in the number of calls for service, the sheriff's department may ask for subsequent review of the CUP by the planning commission. The district exhibits a crime rate that is four hundred and thirty percent of the citywide average, and when staff factored out the undeveloped and rural areas, the district exhibited a crime rate of a hundred and twelve percent. In addition, the project site is located within a commercial corridor serving the residents of the Antelope Valley and surrounding area, with the majority of the offenses being larceny theft. Here is a map showing the nine districts which aligns with the developed areas of the city. The alcohol sales and tobacco sales use meets the location standards requirement specified within the municipal code, because there are no adult-oriented businesses within a thousand feet of the proposed use, and no school, commercial daycare, hospital, public park, library, or recreation center within five hundred feet of the proposed use. As previously mentioned before you, there is a document received today from the Palmdale As previously mentioned before you, there is a document received today from the Palmdale Prevention Community Council regarding this project. In conclusion, the three options for the planning commission are to approve the project, adopting the resolution, continue this item. Or deny the project. Option one is recommended. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you very much, Mr. Alcaron. Do any of the commissioners have technical questions for staff regarding their report?
I do just have one question. So on page twelve of your of the report, city staff report, um, the last paragraph. The last paragraph, um, my understanding that we were focusing on CRD twenty six zero eight. Crime reporting district, correct?
Correct, that was a typo.
And so that is a typo, it's not?
It should've been twenty six oh eight.
Okay, just wanted to make sure. And could you explain to me the, um, you said that this takes into consideration un undeveloped areas? In terms of reporting crime?
Correct.
Correct. So the undeveloped areas, um, how how is that factored into the 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 crime rate? The crime rate area, because I understand you state on what you're reporting in case that this is this this particular um, vendor would be in a high crime area. And it's less because it's false, less than one hundred and twenty percent, it's considered to be recommended?
So, um, the ABC law or requirement is that a jurisdiction. Do an average of all the crime reporting districts within their city. And then if the crimes in any one crime reporting district exceeds the citywide average. Is considered to be by more than twenty percent, uh, considered to be a high crime area. In working with the sheriff's department, uh, crime prevention analyst, uh, it was pointed out that. That it may be considered um, an unscientific way of doing these statistical analysis. Because vast portions of Palmdale are rural or vacant. And there's very little or zero crime happening in those areas. So, um, as we all know, when you average thirty three crime reporting districts and. Twenty four of them are vacant and rural, reporting no crime. Then it disproportionately weights the crime averages to the developed parts of the city. So what we did, uh, just to uh, kind of balance out the perspective. Is we took out the rural areas and we just analyzed the developed portion of the city. So compared to other developed portions of the city, how does this crime reporting district rank? And so that's the difference in the two numbers.
And in this particular case, it was a one hundred and twelve percent.
Correct.
Compared to one hundred and twenty percent.
Right, so it's it's getting close to the high crime area, but if you do, if you factor in all the vacant land in the city. Then it bumps up to four hundred and thirty three percent. Thank you.
Any other technical questions for staff? Alright, then I would like to open the public hearing on this item. If anybody is here to speak on this item, please come forward. And state your name and you will have three minutes to speak.
Again, Javier Flores representing the Palmdale Prevention Community Council. Like to read for the record and you have a copy of this document. The Palmdale Prevention Community Council is opposed to the granting of conditional use permit nineteen dash zero one one. Because the applicant proposes to locate in an area that has an extreme high crime rate. And is unduly saturated with similar type alcohol outlets. A preponderance of research evidence and data informs us. That concentrations of alcohol outlets in a given community will likely adverse adversely affect the residents of said community. Please see attachments B, C, and D. We provided those attachments so that you could. Um, go to the citations and take a look for yourself what it is that the research is saying about this problem. Now, both ABC and city staff agree that the area where the applicant business is located is unduly concentrated. And we provided for you document A attached a bit. This comes directly from ABC and it tells you. That it is unduly concentrated and there is a very high crime rate. Now, if you recall a decision of previous applicant that came before you a couple of years ago. We argued that these two elements were the most important, crime and density, outlet density. You ignored us, you went ahead and gave the applicant what they wanted. We appealed when before city council. And during the discussion of city council, those two elements came up again and again and again. They talked about high crime rate and they talked about undue concentration. And they rescinded your decision that day. We don't wanna see the same scenario occur over and over and over again. And that's why I'm saying, please take a look at. The recommendations that we made earlier today, their policy changes that we think will take care of this problem. And remember, we're not talking about the whole city. We're talking about zip code nine three five five oh. And the reason we're talking about it is because we've got all the alcohol outlets and all the tobacco outlets in that zip code. So the residents that are living there are having to deal with that. We've got the lowest health rates as a result and the highest crime rates. Thank you.
Thank you.
How are you ladies and gentlemen? My name is Tony Marshall. As a resident that lives less than fifty feet away from the establishment that's happening. I would like to let you guys know it is a high crime rate area. I live there. Me personally, I fear when I go outside past ten o'clock, my wife, I don't let her go to the store or go anywhere after ten o'clock. Because of the bad experiences we had in that area. And if it was necessary, go ahead, you know? But I just really feel like it's not necessary. There's so much going on already. You have five establishments. Within fifty to seventy five feet of that area that do sell alcohol, that do sell beer. And already the crime rate is high. Less than two weeks ago, these kids, and I'm shocked that the sheriff didn't say nothing, they were twelve years old. And they were drunk in public. The oldest one was fourteen. And as you guys know, with the more. Beer sales, alcohol sales, the more crime. With the more crime, it's just bad for our community and I really feel like. It's unnecessary. There's already an overpopulation of it and if it was necessary, so be, but. I just feel like it's really unnecessary. And thank you guys for your time and I for my manager, I spoke to her as well. And she was supposed to make it today, she's pregnant, she got sick, but she did email you guys from what I know. And she gave me a letter, I don't know if you guys like it, but I really feel like it's unnecessary and. It's just, it is a high crime area. I live there and like I say, I am afraid to go out at night and I'm afraid to send my wife out at night. And thank you guys for your time and please take this into consideration.
Thank you very much for your comments.
Just one question, do I just wonder if we have a copy of?
We did not receive any, no.
Sir, do you have a copy of the letter? Would you like to submit that for the record? You can just hand it to the clerk.
Thank you. Is there anybody else here to speak on this item? Is the applicant here? Okay, could one of you please come forward or both? You can tag team it, I'm fine. Hi.
Hello.
Okay, does anybody have any questions for the applicant?
What would you say then the nature of the sale is gonna be? Is it just like a grocery store? They come in and buy it and it's warm on the shelf? They take it home, put it in refrigerator, or there there're gonna be a cooler with them with the single cans? Or bottles in there where they can grab it and drink it right away?
So for the the sells in beer, it's gonna be in inside a reach in cooler. Um, twelve packs cases, twenty pack cases. Um, a lot of our customers. Um, are uh, work uh, all week and go to our store and buy meat, carne asada. And they go home with the families to cook um, food and just have a couple of drinks at at home. I feel like um, it's not always a bad thing. Um, I feel like sometimes the alcohol or beer can bring a family together, you know, just. Innocent um, time together at home.
I think the fear that sometimes public has with that is that they're gonna grab a six pack and go in the parking lot and pop it open and start drinking. So if they're taking their their um, alcohol and they're driving home and putting their fridge at home and drinking at home. I don't think anybody has any problem with that. But if they have the single can sales or the, you know, the forty ounce bottles or whatever. That kind of stuff where they can grab it and go in the parking lot, I think that's concerned, a bigger concern.
Have you read all of the conditions that are attached to this? Understanding the what what the um, conditional use permit lists in the hours of operations of sales of tobacco and. Alcohol? Any other questions for the applicant?
So, um, on the, in your package here under project description. Um, it refers to, um, I'll start reading, because the grocery store use. I'm sorry, page two in the uh, so the other commissioners can follow along. Says because the grocery store use, you see that the second parac- uh, second sentence in the second paragraph? Uh, sells, serves, or gives away alcoholic beverages for consumption off premises. So are you are you aware that it's that's in the description that you're gonna give away alcohol?
No, that's um, that's part of the term from ABC that they're subject to a CUP. If they are going to sell or give away, the um, in no intention do we have in representing that this. Applicant would be giving away alcohol. But giving away alcohol is not a way around an ABC license or.
That's that's in all the ABC, uh, okay, I've never seen that. If you were to have, um, okay, yeah, so you're not gonna be giving away alcohol. That's a bad business practice. Um, if if you were not to, if you were to not receive the CUP for the alcohol, would you still open this grocery store there?
Yes, definitely, we will still open it. Yeah, we're, we've been in business for over twenty five years in Lancaster and since.
Where where's your uh, store in Lancaster? Okay.
And uh, we have, we've had um, some incidents, but nothing over the serious for selling alcohol.
And you sell, you sell beer and wine there?
Yeah, yeah. No hard liquor, tobacco, just the basic tobacco, no flavor stuff, no baby, we don't sell that stuff.
Um, I think our sales in every department is important and we do rely on on the sales to to be able to run, run the business. So it is important for us, you know, to have in combination uh, in each department to to reach ourselves. To be able to pay the bills.
What would you say is a percentage of um, your business that rely upon alcohol and?
Summer does increase, because it's hotter, more people in summer.
In the summer?
In the summer, the the alcohol does increase, but I'll say uh, maybe eight to ten percent.
Eight to ten percent. And you guys realize that where you just set up in the area in which you're suggesting that that is somewhat of a. High crime area has at least been identified as an area where a significant amount of crime takes place. Does that concern you? I should I should ask, how do you? What are your concerns about that?
Where we've been working for twenty five years, it's always stuff happening around the neighborhood and we haven't had too many incidents. For us to work, you know, you know, we've been doing it for a lot of years.
I I feel safe.
Yeah.
Where I work, um, I've been work six days a week, seven days a week, I'm I'm always there. And I want our customers to feel safe also when they go shopping with us. And they they should feel comfortable when they walk in. And they know that nothing's gonna happen to them and they're okay uh, in the parking lot. You know, um, we like to control um, what goes around in there, make sure everyone, everything is um, going good and um. Um, there's a ru- a good, a responsible way of of running a business and there's a responsible way of um, buying your groceries, you know? I don't think anyone should be afraid of going to the grocery store for their food.
Any other questions for the applicant?
Thank you. Do you have um, security in the parking lot? Like a security guard at all? Uh, do you have security in the store?
Just us.
To clarify, to clarify that, there is a crime prevention program that's required and uh, they will be required to have cameras. Uh, maintain surveillance, keep the video feeds for a period of time, coordinate with a crime prevention officer. And will you be discouraging people from taking their six pack out in the parking lot and drinking in the parking lot or?
My dad's pretty hardcore on that. He's he's taught us to, you know, do everything straight, take that stuff home, don't hang it around.
We do not tolerate that. Open containers, not okay.
So you've made it, you've made it work for a long time over there at Division and J.
Yeah.
Twenty nine years.
Yeah, everybody I talk to, that's the place to go to get your meat.
Yeah, and a lot of people do feel safe coming in, yeah. We were there all the time, we're just like family. A lot of people, the older generation people in there, so we feel safe, everybody feels safe.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else here to speak on this item? Okay, may I get a motion to close the public hearing? I have a motion.
A second?
And I have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? The public hearing on this item is now closed. Commissioner discussion?
Lead it off, um, I I certainly do understand the importance of um, wanting to establish. Uh, section where you're able to sell alcohol and tobacco. Uh, I am concerned that this is an area that is traditionally known to be in a crime, a high crime area. Um, despite the uh, numbers that have been reflected by the city report in the county, that's about a hundred and twelve percent less. And falls under that one hundred and twenty percent, so I definitely recognize that. Um, there have already been three incidents in that area. Um, I understand it's been pretty much related related to theft or larceny. Um, so not necessarily alcohol, but I also believe that. Bringing an area, bringing alcohol to an area that already seems to be troubled. Um, will only uh, inject more problems in that area with alcohol. And so I I'm inclined at this point not to support it, but I certainly understand and respect the uh. The sellers who wanna in fact implement it. I also wanna take into consideration the community uh, member who came and testified. About how he feels about it and how his family is concerned about it and also the. Um, Palmdale, is it Palmdale Prevention Community Council? Um, their report, I think, highlighted a lot of information that I think is significant as well, so uh, that's my thinking on it.
Thank you, Commissioner Smith. Any other discussion? May I get a motion?
I'd like to make a motion. Pursuant to uh, the conditional use permit nineteen zero nineteen dash zero one one one. I would uh, make a motion to deny the conditional use permit.
Is there a second? Motion fails due to lack of a second. Is there another motion?
I'll make a motion. Motion to approve conditional use permit nineteen dash zero one one. And find the project is categorically exempt from environmental review.
I'll second, I'll second that.
Need to push your button there. All right, we have a motion and we have a second discussion on the motion. Okay, then we shall call for the question. Yeah, it did now. Alright, let the record show, the motion passes with three yes votes, one no vote, and Commissioner French absent. And that brings us to item eight D.
This item will also be presented by Matthew Alcaron.
Evening again. The applicant has submitted a request to establish a type twenty off sale beer and wine alcoholic beverage control license with for a future grocery store use within an approved but unbuilt approximate twenty two thousand square foot standalone building to be located approximately five hundred feet south of Avenue S and west of forty seventh Street East, shown here in the red box. This slide shows the future shopping center previously approved through Site Plan Review eighteen zero zero eight, which contains a mixture of buildings designed for future use by retail, service, commercial, office, and restaurant uses. Pursuant to the municipal code, A C U P is required for the sale of beer and wine. The proposed square footage for the displaying sale of alcohol is shown above, as well as the hours of operation, which is similar to other grocery stores within the vicinity. For clarification, condition of approval number twenty one shows the incorrect start time of six AM, as shown it is a operating hours of five AM to twelve AM daily. The proposed project will utilize no more than ten percent of the total floor area for the sale, display, and storage of alcoholic beverages. Alcohol will be stored in the rear back room and alcohol display will be located on the sales floor on a beer and wine gondola. Per the PMC, the planning commission must consider over intensification, high crime, the surrounding area, and hours of operation with regards to the approval of the C U P. The project site is located within Census Track ninety one oh seven twelve, which has a population of two thousand eight hundred seventy six people. The two methods to determine over intensification are population density and retail density. The project site does not have an over intensification, as shown above, because there are no existing off sale licenses and two are allowed. The project site does not experience over intensification based on the retail density method, because nine off sale establishments are allowed and only four exist. Here is the retail density method showing the twenty randomly selected off sale sites. The project site is located within Crime Reporting District twenty six oh seven. Since the project site is an approved but unbuilt building, there are no calls for service reported by the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department. Based on the property location and it being a vacant lot, the Sheriff's Department recommends approval of this C U P. If the proposed business generates an increase in the number of calls for service, the Sheriff's Department may ask for the C U P to be reviewed. The district exhibits a crime rate that is two hundred sixty two percent of the citywide average and when staff factors out the undeveloped and rural areas in the district, it exhibited a crime rate of sixty seven percent. In addition, the project will be located within a commercial corridor serving the residents of the Antelope Valley and surrounding areas. Here is the map showing the nine districts which aligns with the developed areas of the city. The project site is located in red. The alcohol sales use meets the location standards requirements specified within the municipal code because there are no adult oriented businesses within a thousand feet of the proposed use. Before you is the supplemental staff report addressing three revised conditions of approval, which both the city staff and the applicant have agreed upon. In conclusion, the three options for the planning commission are to approve the project, adopt in the resolution as amended, continue this item, or deny the project, option one is recommended. That concludes my presentation.
And I would just like to add to that that the amendment also includes amending condition number twenty one to reflect the hours of operation beginning at five AM and not six AM.
Thank you very much, thank you, Mr. Alcaron. Do the commissioners have technical questions for staff at this time regarding their report?
It just seems kinda interesting that they're getting this so far ahead of time.
The building is current, the Aldi's building is currently in post approved plan check for uh pulling a grading permit.
So I'm wondering if the conditional use permit is something that if they didn't get it, they wouldn't build a building. Is that, is that why they do it so early?
That would, that would be likely. Yeah, I I don't think the Aldis would build if they didn't have the C U P.
And are they in the nine three five five two?
No, they're um, what district are they in? Two six oh seven. Are you talking about the, the code, I'm sorry.
Yeah, they're nine three five five two. So it doesn't have the same issues as nine three five five oh does. It's kinda smarter than to kinda jump the gun because um you have the the, how many licenses you're supposed to have, so they get it upfront, they're one of those licenses that um they've already got it in advance.
Quick question, Rob, do we ask the applicants whether if they do not get uh C U P granted to them, whether they will continue to to build?
No. We don't normally, yeah, yeah, we assume that if they're asking that they they want it.
Okay, then I would like to open the public hearing on this item, if anybody is here to speak on this item, please come forward and state your name and you will have three minutes to speak.
Javier Flores again with um Pondale Prevention Community Council. I'd just like to take this opportunity again to um distinguish this particular application from previous. There's major differences, we're not here to oppose it and the reasons would. Yeah, I want you to know, we are not anti alcohol, we we are anti alcohol density and that's something that I I don't think has been really uh understood, we've done a poor job of making sure everybody understands that. They keep thinking, uh and we keep coming across it even amongst our allies. We're anti alcohol, are we? No, no, we're not and we've never been. But alcohol outlet density, we are terribly, terribly against because of the impact it has on our community. Particular our children, our children. So um this business does not fall under um our guidelines for oppo- opposition, it just doesn't. We just thought that we'd make that clear, uh we did oppose Aldi's on Tenth Street, but the reason for it is because you already had fourteen other stores just like it. Okay, and we know there's high crime there as well, um it's a different sort, but again, that's nine three five five oh, I'm not sure if that impacts our children and who live in nine three five five oh the same way. That's the reasons, those are the big, big differences, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Flores. Is there anybody else here to speak on this item?
Hi, good evening, Matthew Baca with Aldi, uh obviously on behalf of the applicant, available to answer any questions you guys may have.
Alright, does anybody have any questions for the applicant? You've read all of the conditions, understand and agree to them?
Yes.
Including the amended items?
Yep.
So do you know whether the business would um
I can tell, I can tell you this, we have an out in our lease if we do not get approval. I can answer your question that way. And it and we did apply for this early, knowing that we 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 want to know whether we can sell alcohol or not before we move forward with the project.
Gotcha.
And that, you know, for for us is it's common for us to get that approval early because we, it it is an important part of the business, so, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Baca. Is there anybody else here to speak on this item? May I get a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor? Aye, any opposed? The public hearing on this item is now closed, Commissioner discussion?
Yeah, it's just a quick question and I probably overlooked it, how how many uh um TBC outlets are within that area at the at the moment in the ninth and fifth district?
It was none, right?
There's none.
Two or two or low, zero exists.
Zero, okay.
It's not, yeah, it's in their reporting district.
Thank you.
Alright, I do know that um the Aldi market that um is on the west side in Rancho Vista is quite popular. I do believe that our residents on the east side will be quite pleased um that this is able to go forward with their um beer and wine sale ability, so. I think it will be a boon to the east side and to a lot of people traveling down that S and forty seventh, so. And I would like to thank Javier Flores for clarifying um his organization stance and as you said, I think your organization should do a better job of that type of publicity, making sure that people understand where you're standing on that, so thank you for clarifying that.
So I'll move to adopt a resolution PC H one T nineteen dash zero four zero, approving conditional use permit nineteen dash zero one four and find that the project is categorically exempt from environmental review.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion on the motion? Push your buttons if you haven't pushed it. You have a lot to do up here, you know. Okay. Alright, so we have a motion and a second showing on the screen, any discussion on the motion? Alright, then we shall call for the question, voting on our touchscreen. If it wants us to. Let the record show that the motion passes with four yes votes and Commissioner French absent. Alright, that brings us to item nine, staff communications.
Madam Chairman, um it's come to my attention that I've done a poor job of educating the planning commission on what RINA or RONA is. Uh evidently, there was a recent poll and um planning commissioners failed, so I'm here to just to kind of give you a brief update. Uh RINA, it stands for the Regional Housing Needs Assessment. It is facilitating state law requiring each jurisdiction to provide its fair share of housing for all income categories. Every eight years, uh the Department of Finance does a projection on the growth of the state and then forwards that to HCD, the Department of Housing and Community Development, for distribution amongst the communities in the state. HCD then uh puts the numbers into a magic box and then they distribute those allocations through the different SCAG regions of the state. Uh currently, our local SCAG is working on a methodology for the distribution of those numbers, which is one point three million estimated for the Southern California SCAG region. Uh SCAG is working on a methodology for distributing that amongst the different communities. And um they've they've got four options that they're looking at right now, the fourth one being a hybrid of a couple of options. Uh this is my fourth round in working with uh RINA numbers uh over my career and it started off as RONA and I like that name better cuz it doesn't sound like renal failure or anything, uh but I'm in the minority there. Um and because it has been a very political system over the years and there has been a lot of claims about unfairness in the distribution, SCAG has really tightened up their methodology and uh what we have before us right now in the blended model is what I think is the fairest that I've seen in my career. And just to give you some rough numbers for the next planning period, which will be an eight year period, um Palm Dale has been allocated a total of eleven thousand four hundred and forty two units. Now that sounds like a lot, but it's really not, part of it is the un- the current unmet need. Um since the last RONA cycle, you may have noticed that we went into a bit of an economic decline with very few housing starts. Uh that didn't change the fact that the state still said we needed to provide housing, even though the economy wasn't there to provide it. So a portion of those units are being carried over to the next cycle and that portion is fifty three hundred, so about half of the number is the current unmet need. The new number of additional units that we need to plan for is almost six thousand. Then they go and they distribute that by income type. Where most communities get concerned, or at least the ones that I've been familiar with in the past, are affluent communities that have neglected providing affordable housing for lower income residents. So when they see their numbers, the majority of the units they need to provide are the low and the very low income categories. Very low low income, in my experience, is impossible to provide without significant government assistance. And low income is also a challenge, especially in the more affluent communities. This current methodology um puts in factors to wait for that. So because our census tracks report a relatively large number of low income households, the majority of the units, forty three point eight percent, need to be provided for above moderate income households. So that's households making more than a hundred and twenty percent of the area median income. Another fifteen percent need to be provided for moderate income households. You know, those are, you know, people who are buying market rate homes. Fourteen percent need to be provided for a low income. Um that's a reflection that we've been doing a good job of meeting that need. Twenty seven percent need to be provided for low income and as I've said, that's the hardest target to meet. Uh we don't go below, this is very low.
Very low.
Yeah, we don't go into extremely low, fortunately, the state doesn't compel us to uh plan for that, that that is, that's completely subsidized housing at that point. So the numbers are looking very good. Um when compared with the other Antelope Valley communities of Victorville, Lancaster, and even throwing in Santa Clarita, we've got the lowest overall number and the highest number of above above moderate. So we're continuing to track it because it's not a done deal yet and I've seen things change uh magically in the past, so we're continuing to track it, but it seems to be going in the right direction and I just wanted to take an opportunity to, you know, bring everybody up to speed and answer any questions you might have on on RONA before I go into the next staff item.
Okay, so we failed a pop quiz pretty much, right, somehow?
Sorry.
So.
I didn't have time to 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 prep you before, I didn't know what was happening.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, so was that in in the email or something?
If if we were surveyed, I was not.
Did you get a phone call from somebody who might be on the city council or an email?
I did not.
I did not.
Okay, so a majority of one.
You represented us, Mark.
You failed, dude.
Southern Record, the mayor just talked to me back there and told me to tell you all this, but I was gonna wait till we got to uh
Your turn.
Item ten here on the agenda, that we're all gonna get briefed on RINA. That's the way he pronounces it, RINA, so he's the mayor.
No, there was an email about it, there was no quiz prior to it or after it.
I know, just before you go on, um I just, it just dawned on me, I did not amend my motion, uh yeah, is that a problem? Mister City Attorney?
As amended.
Yeah, I did not just quote that in my uh motion, do we need to redo that?
Which item was that for?
The last, the last one that I just made the motion on. I was, I was thinking in my head, I need to say as amended, I did not.
The 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 commission can make a motion to reconsider and then make a new motion with the the amendment in it.
I would like to make a motion to reconsider our motion on item eight D. I have a motion. I have a motion in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? All right, Barton, could we please reconsider your motion on item eight D?
Absolutely. Thank you.
How would you like it reconsidered?
So, uh...
I think you should amend.
Uh, let's see, where is it here? Go back to this again. So I need to say the motion, make the motion again?
Yes, I...
Right. Okay, so I move to adopt resolution PC twenty nineteen dash zero four zero, proving conditional use permit nineteen dash zero one four as amended, and find that the project is categorically exempt from environmental review. Make that motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion?
I just wanna go on record by saying as, why I really support this motion compared to the other one is because the lack of, one, the, the, the vendor doesn't even exist. That's number one, and two, there, there, um, there's really no crime rate in that area, so. I just wanna know that, that, that that's the reason for the distinction.
All right. All right, then we shall... Now we're gonna motion. I don't think we have to go back. It's too confusing. We don't have to use that machine.
We can take a voice.
I will call for the question with a voice vote.
Amend the motion.
Voice vote by name. That's your job. Chair Nemeth? Yes. Vice Chair Avery?
Yes.
Commissioner Henderson? Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner French absent. All right, the amended motion passes with four yes votes and Commissioner French absent. Thank you very much for...
I appreciate you catching that. Usually, I'm the as amended police. So thank you.
I'm looking at all this red on this piece of paper. I'm like, wait a second.
Okay, sorry, we interrupted the Rob Bruce presentation.
It's all right. It's always entertaining. Um, also, um, as you are well aware, our general plan update is underway, and our next event that we'll be participating in is the Kaleidoscope on this Saturday. We will have a pop-up event, um, where we will be trying to solicit input from the community on what they think we need more and less of in Palmdale, as well as, um, trying to encourage people to participate in the twenty-twenty census. So, uh, come on out to Kaleidoscope. It should be a fun day, and, uh, a couple of staff people will be there, manning the booth. And our next, um, GPAC meeting is scheduled for November. And lastly...
I'm sorry, before you move on, so where is that actually taking place?
Uh, that's in Marie Currie Park.
In the app. Ten to, ten to six.
It's late morning to early evening.
Thank you.
I just have to be there, so.
You will be there.
I'll be there for, I'll be there for about four or five hours of the day. Um, we also had, um, representation at the, um, cultural festival a couple of weeks ago. So, um, you missed the opportunity to see me in a kilt.
Heard about it, though.
So you gotta do your, your cultural, um, back heritage there, so we did that. We had very good turnout. Um, uh, lots of people were very interested in giving us input on the community, so we're getting lots of good feedback. That's working very well. And lastly, um, I will be passing out an email to everybody that is announcing that Jimper TRCD manager has chosen to retire this December. So we're, uh, we wish him a fond farewell. He's done wonderful things for the city, and, uh, time for more transition. And that's Staff Communications.
Thank you very much, Mr. Bruce.
Hold on.
I'm gonna wait just a minute. Mr. Doran, do you have anything to add?
Yes, thank you. While we're talking about transitions, um, I would like to introduce you to our new deputy city attorney, Drew Pletcher.
Hi, Drew, welcome. Don't you wish you were sitting up here because it's so much fun? Okay. We didn't scare him away. That's good.
There's no nepotism going on. We are not related, as far as I know. Uh, I, I don't, I don't make those calls. Um, you'll be in excellent hands if and when Drew, uh, needs to sit in the seat, but, as far as I know, you're stuck with me.
All right, well, we like being stuck with you, so. All right, that brings us to item ten, Planning Commission Communications. I would like to say, good job, Vice Chair, last month. You did a nice job without me. And also, um, Mr. Doran, in regards to, uh, the Palmdale Prevention Community Council's concern and their discussion with you about our alcohol ordinance and, um, items. When I first got on the commission, I know that was the time when we revised our alcohol ordinance, and I believe there was a lot of input from what was at that time known as Pueblo Salute, and I think, I don't know if they're still around, but I know that it was Mr. Flores who was involved in that. So my question to you would be, I know that they were heavily involved in that altering of our, um, alcohol ordinance, and I know that there was a lot of discussion at that time about the distances and the retail density method and all of that, which I thought we were all in agreement with when that was passed. Do you remember any of this?
I do.
Okay.
Um, yeah, and generally speaking, um, over my career here, there's been several discussions with that organization. And you're right, the, the last time that we did a significant overhaul of the, of the alcohol CUP ordinance, um, there were several meetings with them, significant input. Uh, what was brought to the planning commission ultimately council was, you know, the middle ground, right? Uh, there's a lot of give and take in, in those discussions, and, and that was, what was presented was, was something that we could both recommend to the planning commission and, and the city council. And then we've also had made some, some changes to the definition of, of the single-serve container.
Yes.
And they were, they were involved in, in that also.
Okay.
So, yes.
Thank you very much, and thank you for meeting with them and, and helping them to flesh out their ideas and...
Sure.
Come across. Thank you. All right, any other items?
So, Mr. Flores, I have recommended like five suggested policy changes here, um, and was suggesting or making at least a recommendation that we attempt to address it, uh, next month. I, I don't know how actually that works, but is this something that you and Mr. Flores have been working on, these policy changes at all? And what role does the commission have with respect to maybe having an opportunity for them to actually have an input in the change?
Sure. Lot of issues there. I'll maybe... And see if I can take them one by one, and then we'll see if I've answered your question. Um, so, first all, we, first off, we can't have a real substantive discussion about, about these requests at, at this meeting, right? Because we're, we're prohibited by the Brown Act to have substantive discussions on anything that's not on the agenda. Um, having said that, the planning commission could request that we place this item on the agenda for a discussion at a future meeting. Generally speaking, any changes to the zoning ordinance, including the alcohol CUP, would require an ordinance amendment which would first come to the planning commission, and then ultimately, um, the decision on whether or not to make those changes is made by the city council. So i-if it's, if it's something that the planning commission is interested in undertaking, my recommendation would be to put it on the agenda for just a, a general discussion about it at, at a future meeting. Um, and then i-if, if it's the desire of, of the planning commission to recommend that some changes be made, um, then I can convey that, uh, that interest, uh, to, to staff and the, and the city council.
Placing it on the agenda, does that include public comment as well or just among us?
Uh, no, absolutely. It would, it would involve public comment. So, so we put it on the agenda, um, anyone viewing the agenda could determine whether or not they were interested in attending the meeting to participate, uh, and, and or comment. Um, so we, we would have a, a public comment section, and then we could have some, you know, a full discussion about it.
Thank you.
Any other commissioner discussion? All right, then at this time, I shall adjourn our meeting to our regular Planning Commission meeting of November fourteenth at seven PM. Thank you.